Good evening. This is the regular session of the Police and Fire Advisory Committee to be held on Tuesday, excuse me, Wednesday, September 11th, 2024 at 5:30 PM, in person at the City of Bisbee Council Chambers on 915 Toddreeville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. And I will call this meeting to order. It is 5:30. I will do roll call. Elizabeth Luke.
Present.
Alexis Claire is present. Cynthia Conroy.
Here.
Kay Goikovich.
Here.
Thomas Schelling.
Here.
Greg Nolan.
Here.
Sherri Chase.
Here.
Pete Skinner, Council Liaison.
Here.
And fire staff has not arrived. Police Department Deputy Chief Jay Ritchie.
Here.
And city staff, Joelle Landers. Okay. If we could all please stand for a moment of silence. I have been asked to read the following. Never forget. A time to remember those who died, those who served, and those who will carry on. In memory of those we lost. September 11th, 2001. We will never forget. God bless the USA. And if you would please stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I knew we were here.
Okay. Pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have made a special request of the Chairperson, Kay Goikovich, to start our evening with Agenda Item Number Six, which is a Firewise Presentation and Discussion with Cooper Raphael. If you would please stand.
Hello. Hello, Cooper. And I'm not quite sure what you all would be interested in hearing from me. I can talk about what we have done over the last six years for Bisbee. You've got a handout that was, that is a slide presentation, but I don't, it's a, you know, a PowerPoint. And I think for all adults here, and they can read the paper, so I don't think I need to take your time reading the PowerPoint to you. I have larger versions of that. I'm just printing us all a small few more. But I don't know exactly what it is you'd like to hear from me. So does anybody have a thought?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I believe we're all aware of the Firewise program in Old Bisbee. And I think what I'm interested in, do we have something like that going on in Warren? I see, you know, I see a bunch of signs, be wise, be firewise, or whatever. I think I would like to see, and maybe you can give us some information on how we start something up in Warren, because I know we have a lot of brush and a lot of fire hazard down there.
Yes.
And I think we need to get a handle on that before something happens.
Well, let me tell you how we came to be in Old Bisbee. Al Anderson and Ann Carl started it, I think about six years ago. And every time they left on vacation, he would look at the mountain behind his house, and then he would go into his house and get his video camera out and video all of his property, all of his belongings. Because if that thing caught fire, he knew his house would go. And they decided, you know, that that was silly to just sort of leave it up to fate. So they called National Firewise, and within a day, they had a representative from Firewise in their kitchen at their table, talking to them about Firewise Neighborhoods and Firewise Programs. So they got right on it, and they, they wrote in enormous grant. And they got, I think there were probably at one point about 70 of us volunteers knocking on doors, because what the grant was for was brush and treat cleanup at the Louis, the city and country interface. And it was a labor-intensive period. It was a volunteer-intensive period. Anybody who's ever gotten a grant knows how much management goes into those things. Elizabeth was in my neighborhood, and I've mentioned her almost many times. So we went to houses very often, because the land that was involved in this cleanup was private property, city property, ADOT, county property, Forest Service property. So we had to get permission from all those entities, and we're to do this cleanup. Then COVID hit, and we had started to work with the Department of Corrections crews, because they're inexpensive and it was lovely. But then they got locked up. So a year passed, we had to spend the money. We got Goldfield to come and do the rest of the cleanup. So we didn't get very far. It burnt Al and Ann out, unfortunately, because it was a lot of work. And it burned out a lot of volunteers, too. So they just stopped. They just stopped doing it. They sent out an email to all of us volunteers. And I'm the only person who stepped up and said, oh, we can't let this go, because it had a certain momentum. I got a friend to work with me. Fortunately, she has tech skills, which I lack. And so what we became over the last four years, four and a half years, is basically an information-only organization. We created Sparky, which I'm sure you people have seen. We had, we were able to get the hospital to donate a billboard that we had up for eight year, eight months on the highway there. And we tried, I set up tables a number of times at the farmer's market, and we've tried to get, to your point, your question, people, somebody else from San Jose, somebody from Warren to step up. But it's a volunteer situation. And I so far, I don't live in Warren, so I don't know people there that well. So really, it's a matter of getting somebody to step up and do it. And we, interesting timing, both Lindsay and I are tired.
For sure.
You know, she's gotten involved in other things, and that leaves me running Firewise. And I, I'm ready to move on to. So what, so what we have done over the last four years is we've done some cleanups. The first year, we did a house up on Lockland, who I can't remember the name of the tenant, but we cleaned up all around her property. Somebody couldn't do it herself. Judy Jo, Judy Jo. The next year, we did a door-to-door campaign, where we took all of this, all these brochures around and hung them on everybody's door. And we did a certain amount of cleanup, because there's a National Firewise Day every year in May.
Right.
And last year, we cleaned up Dean Cartwright's property, which was right on Tucson Canyon, and used it sort of as a demonstration of what the practice looks like.
Which, where was that?
It's, so Dean's property is the one that's right below, what's the rock called?
Castle Rock.
Castle Rock. So it's that big empty lot that never gets used.
Right.
But there have been fires that have gone up that hill as a result of all that drug rush. So we were lucky to get his permission to do it, because he's not, usually, likely to do that. And then this past year, we created the Sparky Matt Spot, and got a billboard, got signs put up in the neighborhoods. And, you know, we've worked with the fire department. I tried to get a hold of the chief today, and he's out of town on vacation. But we have another grant that was, the money's just sitting there waiting to be spent, and we struggle, and this is something I was interested to talk to you guys about. Jim must be like me, and has few technical skills, and is busy doing other things. Because what he has to do is get this RFP written, asking for, finding a contractor that can come in and spend this money on the fuels reduction grant that we got.
How much is that thing for?
Hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. He seems to be struggling with that. And I, you know, I, I'm still surprised that there's no, like, secretarial hours allowed for administrative stuff for the fire department, this extra like that.
What year was it that Luke did the clearing? Was it 2020?
Well, let's see, 2020 was the lockdown. It was probably 2021.
What is it?
I'm sorry.
What do you think the frequency is? How often do you think that the, these properties need to be?
Every year.
Every year.
When the heavy rains are over, like right now, starting in September is a good time, like in Bisbee, one thousand, we clear a great deal.
Yeah, because I drive around nice, nice year.
Yeah, and it doesn't come back for a year.
Tall grass everywhere.
Yeah, well, you'll see DOC start to cut the entire course, but then all the rest of the stuff, which is, you know, we did 20%, and then there's 80%. And then there's people on their own properties. And then there's deserted properties, which are the most hazardous. And then there's parks.
Sure. And we have no cloud, as far as those go, those deserted properties. Nobody seems to be.
So I guess Luke was just hired directly, wasn't put up to bid at that point?
You know, that was Al and Ann.
Does the grant require that you get bids?
Yes.
Using the lowest bidder, the lowest qualified bidder?
And we, and, and the fire department had two resources, one through the, through Freeport, and one through National Fire, yeah, I think, Department of Fire and Forestry and that.
How, how are you doing?
They're both busy, because there's fires around the country.
How do you perceive putting the work up to bid this time around?
Well, this is something to talk to Chief Richardson about, because that's his job.
Okay.
I've met the safety coordinator over at Fort Wachukka, who was a firefighter in the Air Force. Interesting fellow, who, his, his mission was to, anytime the shuttle, space shuttle took off and landed, his crew would go to wherever that site was, and basically to fight. So he's now a civilian safety coordinator at the fort, and so he charges fire there. And he gave me, and I gave it to Chief Richardson, a contractor, a local contractor, and this is what they do. You know, they're like wildland firefighters. They go out, and they know how to start, you know, intentional burns, and how to cut down the brush, and stuff like that. You know, and it's a, it's a, but it's a job that has to be done every year here.
Right, okay.
What we don't want to do is that guy, on Fort Wachukka, more than, I've lived here 40 years, more than two occasions, there are intentional fires that have gone out of control. It's great when you're in the mountains. It wouldn't be great anywhere over here.
No, no.
So that, that process is not acceptable here.
Well, there's some pretty interesting technology around that. There's this thing that looks like a lawnmower.
Oh, yeah.
That, that sets the grass on fire as you go along pushing it. And then right behind it is the water that shoots out of its firehouse, and the grass that's, there's a lot of technology. Fire is a big deal everywhere. And so the other, let me just say this about Firewise. You know, as I'm, we're about, we put ads in the paper once a month, trying to remind people. So we've really become sort of the school principal or something, that reminds people all the time to please practice fire safety methods around their properties. Because when the fire department does come, if it doesn't look like they can save it, they're going to keep driving. If we're ever in a paradise kind of situation, which is the big fear. So, but, you know, there's only so much of reminding people. And given that this is an issue globally, that climate change is not going away, I think the emphasis has to be on people just really understanding, and have to take care of themselves and their neighbors.
Well, Bisbee's got a long history of bad fires.
Yes.
From turn of the century, it's virtually almost a whole town burned.
Yes, no, it's true.
Used dynamite to create a fire stop in the buildings.
I'd like to add to what you said, Cooper, about your neighbors. One of the things we've done, in two streets in Old Bisbee, and I think others have followed suit, and that is we have like a fire call down. So that when we do hear of something going on, one neighbor on each street has the phone numbers of the neighbors on that street, and they call them and tell them, hey, look at the mountain, or they'd say, we've got five minutes to get out, or whatever. And we've used that for a couple of things, and that really has worked very well. And I'm speaking for Star Avenue and Lockland Avenue specifically. Yeah. Alert Sense is something that everybody, we always try to remind people to sign up for. Sometimes it's a delayed alert. The Bannon Creek has been Firewise, there are things you, there's criteria in order to continue to be a Firewise community, and there's reasons to do that. A little bit of help with insurance problems these days, little help with getting grants, but to be qualified, you have to have enough hours, enough citizens on board during the work. Bannon Creek out there beyond the tunnel, there's probably, I think they told me, like maybe 20 properties or 25 families or something like that, but they've been an organized community effort. And they get together once a month and have a potluck, and discuss all year long, oh, you need this, your firewood moved? Okay, well, I'll come to your house next week. So, you know, obviously Bisbee's too big for that. But what you're talking about, community support in neighborhoods, you know, having a neighborhood captain that can make that happen. So I, you all are, I don't know what your committee actually does, I'm curious about that. But if you have connections to people that are concerned about fire, who might be younger than me and have tech skills, that might want to take on, starting one in Warren, starting one in San Jose, taking on Old Bisbee, we're desperately looking.
Well, all of us are volunteers. We're, all of us volunteer for this committee. And many of us, that's all we do is volunteer. So we're very familiar with burnout with volunteers, and, you know, trying to recruit more people. And so I think it's something that we need to do, and I'll get with council, or some big leaders in my work, to see what we can come up with.
Yeah. And we'll offer all the information that we have. We, we are, we've collected all the hours for this year, so that we will be nationally Firewise certified for another year until next November, so we can pass them on. We have a website that's in operation now, but it's going to shut down in November if nobody else comes in and wants to keep it going.
Publica, our website's got, Publica's website.
OldbisbeeFirewise.org.
Okay. I have another question, too. What attempts did you all do to form relationships with, or were you successful at all, besides this, the grant writing and the original grant, which obviously took up partnership with the fire department part of that? Or more importantly, was the city of Bisbee and the city manager at all helpful with any of this, in any way?
The original grant, I'm not really sure how they got that. The one, this one that we got, you know, Danielle Bouchere.
Wrote, wrote this one.
Yeah.
And the city of Bisbee, and/or the fire department was an active partner. It's like Firewise is a nonprofit. The city is a...
Activism is a loose word, I would say. You know, they benefited from it. The city will benefit from it.
Yeah, so Danielle wrote it. It's, it's to, what's the money?
Fuel reduction.
What, what's the budget?
Fuel reduction.
Fuel reduction.
So the same thing that we did.
Same thing, like hiring a contractor or some number of people.
And there is a contractor that that's his thing. That's what he does. And I gave the information to Chief Richardson probably six weeks ago, and I was not able to get a hold of him to see where we are. Because what has to happen is that the RFP, whatever that stands for, the put out to bid...
Request for proposal.
There you go. Has to be written, and he's never written one.
Who goes up?
Yeah. He's never written one. And so he's kind of at a loss, and...
We've got people.
We got people. We got people.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, I was dumbfounded to find out we didn't have people, so I'm happy to hear that.
What's your...
I'm, I'm curious whether the RFP would come from Chief Richardson versus the Public Works organization.
Well, it's in his desk.
But I'll, I'll push on that.
Yeah.
I'll find out and see where it's at.
Okay.
Okay. So, question, you know, the grant was written, you know, it was awarded 122,000. Has the money been paid, or is the RF, is the money sitting in an account? Do you have an account, and the money's in?
The money is available as soon as this thing is written. It's there, it has a timeline on it.
Okay. Who's giving you the money?
Is there a match on it?
You know, all I know is what the title is. And it's a federal grant through the Department of Forestry and Department of...
I just wanted to say, I think for the best use of timing and everything, we've gotten great information here from Cooper, and I'm so appreciative of your time and everything. However, we're now getting into the little nitty-gritty details, and that we need other, other people involved in to answer. So rather than bouncing back and forth, I would just like to make a recommendation, any final last comments, or any last, any comments you'd want to make, and that we go ahead and wrap up.
I have a lead ask. Me, too. Okay.
Go ahead.
What's your phone number, please? Mine's...
415-302...
Uh huh.
Wait. Okay. 7473.
7473?
41302, 7473.
3027473.
I'm not sure who this should go to, so I'll just say it out loud. But two thoughts that I had during this, is that if there's money there, we could perhaps do something like an AmeriCorps, and pay people to go ahead and clean up. And the other one is that I feel that the city trucks are going to be coming around to all the neighborhoods, and picking up all the dry debris and grasses that people have collect, collected and cut. So it doesn't lay on the ground.
The grant was written for specific property.
For what?
For specific properties. The properties are already in that, and it's 160...
Not in general?
No.
Well, that's too bad.
It's a specific area. Well, and more grants can be written. You know, 122,000, it's amazing how little that does. You know, it doesn't go very far.
So this specific grant is for Old Bisbee area?
Yes.
And, and specific properties within Old Bisbee, like, but you don't know what that...
I haven't seen the map, so I can't really tell you. I've got the map. Oh, you've got the map.
Right, then.
Yay!
Okay.
Just one, one last comment. On this right here, there's some good valuable information. If we can get this, put on, get a soft copy of it, we can all get it out into the community. I think people are more apt to read it if it comes in on their computer.
Well, this is what we, we have given this all out to the community. It's what our website is completely made up of. This is a bigger version of the same information. This is what I said, we door-to-door, we door-to-door this material.
Many, many... You've got a lot to you. She was part of it.
There's a smaller version of the same information. You don't have to...
Thanks, Cooper.
You're welcome. Where'd you get this? Yeah. Okay.
Of course, of course. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Don't hesitate to call me if you have a question.
Wonderful. Thank you again. So I'm going to go to Agenda Item Number One, which is Welcome and Introduction for New Commission Members, Alexis Claire and Greg Nolan. And Kay, if you'd like to maybe do one.
Alexis, why don't you tell us a little bit about you? I don't know. I've been friends with Kay since I moved to Bisbee in the early 80s. I'm an activist, a traveling, I've worked many different jobs, and I like me. And what's your interest in the Police and Fire Advisory? Whether it's in or for or don't work in our town, and how others have talked to me about it, and my own personal feelings.
Okay.
Hi. Quick bio. I'm a licensed contractor, licensed engineer in California, and I've been self-employed all my life virtually, except with a few exceptions. And I'm new to Bisbee. I've been here a year and a half.
Okay. And I think your interest in the Police and Fire Advisory.
Well, I just, I like being part of the community, and I think I'll just sit here and try to get a feel of what's going on, and just see where I can help out.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Me, too.
Okay.
Can you look in the chair?
I did what?
Go ahead in the chair. You come to the chair now.
What about this?
Yeah, that chair.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Two. Discussion and Possible Approval of the Minutes Action Agenda of the Meeting of the Police and Fire Advisory Committee, held on May 28th, 2024, and that is in your packet.
Everybody by chance do you do it?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of reading.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's wonderful. Agenda Item Number Three. Discussion and Direction on How to Best Respond When Committee Members Are Questioned by the Public Regarding Homeless Concerns and How to Counter Rumors. And I have a little note there. Aside from calling the police and reporting incidents involving public, private property, fires, drugs, et cetera. I was able to speak with City Manager, Mr. Pocken, and he had asked that I share the information of when responding to questions and/or rumors, when you're approached by citizens, the best direct way to start that conversation would be with the city manager. So that was the recommendation, is that you can take that information from a citizen or a question in email, and then share it with the city manager. And depending on what it's involving, what department, he can arrange the best follow-up for it. And then also, just to mention and stress, anytime it is something that is unlawful, or a safety concern, or a health hazard, or a property hazard, the first call needs to be to 911. I think there are times when phone calls go to other people prior to 911, and it's, you know, direct. If you're seeing something, call. If you see something, say something. And so that, that's what I have in that regard. Thank you.
You did say to take their information, or their question.
Yeah, take their...
Don't send them to him. We go to him and say, this person said this.
Yes.
And it's on your plate now, Steve, right?
Yes.
I did. Give it to the town manager. Right. Like you say, if it's active, there's always 911.
Yes.
Or the business police, depending on the town.
Yes.
I just have a follow-up question. Chief, on, obviously, we want to inundate 911 with calls that aren't 911, so they can still call 432-2261?
Yes. Now taking directly to this message.
Okay.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
Yeah, no, definitely.
432-2261. Correct.
And then the discussion on, on, I have number, three.
Well, yeah, I have one other question.
Okay.
So this originally came up a long time ago, and it continues to sort of raise its, raise its head up in different ways at different times. So for example, with the Firewise presentation, and with the threat of now we go into the really dry season, which means we go into the higher, high fire season, and that includes the fact that many of our transient people, for lack of a better word, even if they've lived here for years, our unhoused, our transient, our homeless, our mentally ill, our seriously mentally ill, and our criminally mentally ill, and just unlucky people, because they are around being served by certain organizations very well, which is the homeless shelter, or this group, or that group. If you see someone who might be putting an area at risk because of their lifestyle, which would be starting fires to, to cook their food, or starting fires because they throw their cigarettes down as they're walking through Old Bisbee and your neighborhood, and particularly out here where they grew. Are we ever going to have something more than, in this group or any other, something that resembles what people have asked me for? um, something that resembles what people have asked me for, which is more like, is there a plan?
Okay.
So I would say great to take it incident by incident, which of course is the pattern of the criminal justice system when I was a probation officer, um, which is different from in each police officer and each fireman. I mean, we have all these many, many calls and one time we were interested in data collection around this question. I don't know or remember. That seemed like a controversial issue. So, uh, I don't want to create any controversy because I think our role here is to gain information, do discussion, make sure we present police and fire, uh, in the best light, given that citizens will often take a, a snapshot and create a terrible story. Um, so, but still, I think consistently from different levels of people, because I am out there a lot, I've heard this question of what's the plan? Now, I don't have an answer for that. So if the plan is to just call the police, two two six one is what I do, or call nine one one, which I haven't had to do yet because it didn't elevate to that, or send them to Steve or go see Steve myself, well, those are three steps, but it doesn't add up in my brain to a plan.
Okay.
But I may be the only one who feels that way. So if I am, fine, because I'm doing a lot of other plans with the city, so I don't care if we do this one or not.
Okay.
But it just seems like.
I will, I will follow up on that. Definitely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, agen, any other? I don't want to cut anybody off. Um, agenda item number four was, um, discussion on citizen fundraising. This was mentioned at the, um, the end of our, I believe, last meeting when there was discussion in regards to the ladder truck. And Mr. Shelling, you had asked about the possibilities there and so I wanted to open the floor to you. Um, or if you want to get more information, I just.
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, we did a great job of fundraising at St. Pat's Church for the window restoration. So when they were talking about hopefully getting the grant to get this ladder truck, but then of course there's the cost of equipment.
And I was wondering, is there a possibility, one, does the city, is the city able to accept grant?
I mean, fund donations from private citizens? Can we work with one of the service organizations that maybe spearhead this fundraising? Um, working with the fire department to get the equipment they need, the list of it and things like that? Having them there with the truck, different ideas of just doing fundraising to equipment. Hopefully they get the grant to get to them.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've got the grant for the equipment.
Do we have?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I don't have the most up-to-date information at my fingertips, but I've sat through a couple of city council meetings in the past where we had, uh, talked about grants that we've received. I don't know if the fire department, are you representing the fire department?
I am.
Do you know anything?
So the, I know a little bit. So I, I don't think that the, the special funding that Congress is going to attach to appropriation bill project covered the entire cost of the project. So there are certainly room for private donations to, to cover that additional part. I want to say that federal line was somewhere in the fifty or sixty percent range. Um, so the city would still have to come up with quite a few hundreds of thousands of dollars in the budget.
Would, uh, this ladder truck need a, a building to store it? Sounds like it's probably forty-five, fifty feet long. Do we have a firehouse?
That, that's, that's not been an issue that's come up that we've discussed, that I've been involved in.
I don't picture standing outside.
Yeah, well, yeah. And then, so the, the big issue with the ladder truck is given current staffing, there's not firefighters who run the ladder truck. Uh, so you would have to move firefighters from an engine to a ladder truck. So the, the idea was, would be that this ladder truck would also carry, you know, an engine worth of water and a pump. So it'd become a combination engine and ladder truck. So it would still go to station eighty-one here on Highway ninety-two and, and use that space in the existing station and replace a slot for an engine at that station.
And just one other thing to add, even receiving the grant and knowing that we're going to buy a ladder truck, it's, from what I understand, it's gonna take quite some time to build it out with the equipment, like more than a year.
And I would always add that the last time we needed a ladder truck, we had one. The probability that Douglas will be burning down at the same time that Bisbee is burning down is pretty remote and therefore the whole concept of communities close together, be they neighborhoods or close sister cities like Douglas, the Bisbee, Sierra Vista, blah, blah. Every major fire I've lived in here, or in Bisbee and the big one out there, and you name it, wherever it's happened, it has always amazed me the number of service men and women who can appear so quickly to meet the need. And so to me, it's not so much a focus on, oh, we need a ladder truck, as much as knowing that our leaders are in touch with quick responses to a community effort. And so that ladder truck came when we needed it from Douglas, as you all know, if it was when we ran the pavement. And so we don't have to be fearful that we don't have a ladder truck or we have to spend all our money and energy getting a ladder truck. It's more like we need to make sure we have the staffing. We need to make sure that, you know, and that's not our job here. That's the job of the city manager and the city council, in my opinion.
Right, right, me as well.
Okay.
One other aspect on, on your question, as far as there is there a mechanism for private donations to come in, let's say for the ladder truck? I know of one other effort where an individual is doing a collection, Gretchen Bonaduce was doing one. I don't know what the status of that is, but I believe she collected about a thousand bucks or something.
Okay.
Which, which, by the way, anyone can donate at any time. City of Bisbee is a nonprofit. It accepts grants, private donations, gifts, you name it, just like busy vote that I run and just like the church and just like the city. Anybody can give anything that's of use that, that will accept. Property, cars, in time, they'll take it.
Wonderful. Mr. Shelling? Okay, thank you very much. And agenda item number five, discussion on the presence of outside agencies patrolling in Bisbee, specifically Sierra Vista Police present in the Gulch area of Berry Avenue and O.K. Street. And.
Does this happen?
Yes.
This was, yes, this was asked to be an agenda item and, um, I would defer to Deputy Chief Ritchie.
Alright, so in Arizona, police officers are certified and licensed by state law agency known as the, he's also standard and trained here. Otherwise known as A.C. Pope, Pope, okay? Once an officer receives Pope's certification pursuant to the state law, that officer basically has authority anywhere in the state of Arizona. When they are formally invited into another jurisdiction, such as a multi-ACD like task force, traffic enforcement details, Stone Garden, aggressive driver details, et cetera, or they have, uh, happen to witness a crime on the way to court on the way home, because we do have people from Sierra Vista that live here in town. The expectation gives them the authority, if you've got patrol operations, four state laws within the city of Bisbee or any other city in this state. And it's also encouraged and the chief, our chief supports that. So that's pretty much simple as that. We have all kinds of stuff when it comes to outside agencies here. Cochise County, DPS, Sierra Vista, Douglas. They go across every single deck.
Yeah, Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's Department, yeah. Everybody's here in town. We're the central point for everybody here. So we're gonna have outside law enforcement agents patrolling. Just because there's a Sierra Vista guy sitting down doesn't mean that he's not on a task force or some type of detail doing his job down here.
Is it possible when that happens, when there's saying influx of other agencies from other towns in Bisbee, does that come from the Bisbee police saying we need more people here and cars?
As I said, the chief encourages and supports when other outside agencies come into Bisbee can help enforce speeding and all that stuff. What's number one complaint in this town? People speeding through our community.
Yep.
If we have other agencies aiding in that, trying to control that behavior, we should support that. But we get a lot of complaints that, oh, you're not enforcing it or you are enforcing it. I got hit up the other day sitting in front of the Ironman because I was parked there over a green traffic.
Sure.
Or traffic, moderate traffic up and down Tubbsong Canyon. It's a double edged sword.
You mean you got hit up like, is it, thank you very much for being here or?
No, oh, negative. Why are you here? Why are you being here for so long?
Did you take their name and phone number?
No.
So we can phone for you? That would be me. So that would be you?
Why it was?
Yes. I went over there and I asked them why were they sitting there for so long? There were two cars and three guys.
And one of those guys had a meeting. And one of these guys was next to you that I was training, field training officer.
I'm, I'm wondering, I, I don't remember this question coming up in the last meeting. I'm wondering where it came and whether it was coming from a positive or a negative direction. I'm not quite understanding the question. Is it, I don't.
Was there an event that precipitated you getting put on the agenda?
I don't remember it being.
All of the committee members, uh, can speak to myself or to Kay or to the, um, vice committee chair.
Right.
With items that they would like to be placed on the agenda. So, um, if it, even if it's not mentioned.
Was coming at it from a negative point of view or can we get more officers around or is it like, why are they here?
I wouldn't place judgment on where that question came from. I mean, my personal, whether I, why I thought it was positive or negative. It was a question asked and I, I followed through and with it, putting it on the agenda. Oh, no, I'm just saying, I don't, I wouldn't know how to respond to that. I'm, yeah, that'd be my opinion. Okay.
Well, and that does, uh, I think, lead to something that's not necessarily on the agenda. But certainly, as a police and fire committee that has been understaffed for, I don't know, three years plus and now has enough diversity, God forbid I should misuse the word, to reach out to the broader community to say, if you have concerns, yeah, you can go ask the police. Hi, what are you doing here? Or thank you for being here, like I did, because I saw three guys in the exact same spot and I went in and said, hey, what's happening? Anything fun? And of course they used my cameras because there'd been a very potentially serious assault the morning before. So I for one, um, think that, that it's our job not to be cheerleaders for police and fire, but for some reason in this community, the police and in other communities are looked at because there's a little bit of fear and the firemen are looked at like they're heroes. So this culture that we have in Bisbee is not, and is reminiscent of the cultures in America where it's easy to divide people up on whether they like or don't like official capacity people. And I think our job is to listen to anyone, including ourselves, and to make sure that we give a voice so we can assist in the message that, if there's an incident, for example. Uh, the last serious incident we had, this organization did nothing, even though I think I sat down on the time. Um, and so it'd be nice to begin to invite the community people that come in with concerns. So if somebody gives you a concern, the first thing is to take it to the city manager. The second thing is to bring it here so it can give them an opportunity, if it's an actual incident, to give us more information so we can give back more information. But certainly I see our role, I think we've talked about this before, I don't think all of you are on the committee, so I'll just bring it up again. Our role is more informational and support for our very well-trained and well-organized and well-appreciated, in my opinion, police department.
I think it's great to see other cities here in town.
Thank you so much. Yeah.
Cindy, can I just respond to that a little bit? I want to add one. We're saying, when it's not that those of us here are there for the police and fire, what part of us is there for the, the people who live here and have these questions and concerns? No, that's what I was saying. Those people out there, I hear you know that they would talk more to us rather than calling up and complaining at a policeman or complaining at a fireman. You would say, if you hear somebody yak 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 at a park, let's say, then you might just find out their concerns and then you would bring them here. And then we would in fact bring them out further because there's always someone here that we can clarify official information so we're not making it up. And, uh, and therefore we hold down things like rumors, like I can't tell you how many different people have said to me, well, I saw this drug deal going down and I, and, and it's really terrible, blah, blah, blah. And I said, well, did you call the police? And their answer is almost always no, because the police won't do anything. I said, well, let me see if I have this straight. Police won't do anything, but you didn't call them and they don't have eyes in the back of their head in the sky. So how could they do anything if you didn't call them? And so that was my answer, you know, because I've called them many times when I see things that I think they might be interested in. And I've never had a problem in forty years with them being unresponsive. Sometimes they might be overly responsive, but over is better than no response. So.
Thank you, Cindy. Thanks. Thank you so much. Mr. Nolan, you had?
You know about the police department having a, a PR officer? He could go to schools, he could take ads out in newspapers saying, you know, this is what we're doing. We're patrolling speakers. We'll be parked here and here and here, um, just so that
Okay.
they know that they're not just sitting there drinking coffee and, you know, looking at YouTube videos. They're, they're on duty. They're, they're patrolling the canyon and they're, they're trying to, you know, slow people down.
Okay. I will make note of that suggestion. Thank you.
One of the younger guys, this gentleman here.
Has nothing else to do but to do PR?
No, he'd do it on his own time.
Oh, I see.
Didn't he have a farm? He goes to the schools. I have kids. I'm officer.
Okay.
What's your last name?
Captain Chief Ritchie.
So, you know, and just, I remember these things when I was a kid.
Okay. Thank you so much. I made note of that.
That's back to the other question.
Elizabeth, did you have a question?
I don't have a question. I would like to give accolades to the, uh, fire department. Uh, several times recently, the last couple of months, I have seen them actually come up each one of the streets in Old Bisbee. And one time I was wandering around the old pool, just getting some exercise, and I said, say, guys, uh, nice to see you here. Is there anything I should know? Somebody have a heart attack or something? And, um, they said, no, we, uh, we just like to bring new people up here and make sure that our trucks and our personnel can know where the streets are and how to get up all of them. And I would just like to say thank you and give me absolutely two and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Um, and we have, uh, completed the agenda item number six, which was our firewise presentation. And the last agenda item, number seven, which is board comments or future agenda item suggestions. And we can, you can share them, uh, but this is not the time to discuss them. So I will make notes if anyone has anything at this time. Yes?
This is, excuse me, we're directing for Deputy Chief Ritchie. I don't know, Tucson started a blue envelope program a while back where people that are autistic, I guess, they can, they have a blue envelope they keep in their vehicle with the registration and insurance program. And the police officers are trained in how to handle people with autism when they come to a stop. Because they're little, they have to be spoken to directly one subject, kind of different thing. And I was wondering if it's possible you could find out, introduce on how the program's working, if it's feasible to start it here, because there is a very, there is a productive autism community here that, you know. I think it would be who, the city itself to have this program.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Cindy?
I'd like to have an agenda item that does further carry forth, um, the discussion or information regarding a plan for.
Yes.
The homeless. The only thing I've heard is we moved them off of private property onto public property.
Okay. I will make note of that as well.
Yeah, see if we can.
Okay.
Deal with that.
Any other suggestions?
Yeah, a suggestion for myself and others, I would like to have them come up for discussion at another time about having police on foot in Old Bisbee.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have something else on my mind.
Yes.
Whether the police would like to have someone, some organization, donate some really nice electric bikes so they wouldn't have to be on foot. They could be like they are in London and other major cities where they're riding, like they've got first aid cops on bikes. They've got, you know, so, but if you have an electric bike, then you can have a nice little package of things you might need and the bike itself will pedal or you can pedal it. So it's, it's more, it beats foot traffic because foot traffic to me is like, walking is like, not the thing anybody wants to do, let alone me, let alone what I ask the police to do. But I might ask if you.
But I might ask you, do an electric bike, electric bike campaign, are they interested? It's more like, we need to know if they're interested or not.
Okay, I don't know if this committee's the right forum for that, but that is definitely something I can put feelers out and, and see. And I can respond to you and let you know the best way to go about that.
Yeah.
So not a problem.
They got some really cool bikes now, electric bikes.
Okay.
Homeless is cool, motorbikes.
I believe you, all right. Thank you all, any, no? Okay, I'll take a motion for adjournment, please.
Make a motion. Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.